For the Pledge of Allegiance. Go ahead and do our roll call. Looks like everyone is here, including our student representatives. So much. Are there any adjustments to our agenda?
We have one adjustment. We need to add a 2.3. So we're going to enter into two executive sessions, and when we come out, we will have an adjustment that will read motion to either grant or deny a grievance filed by the Winthrop Education Association under the collective bargaining contract between the board and the Winthrop Education Association support staff, and to direct the chair to provide the association with the board's written decision within five days in accordance with Article 23 E3C.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Is that all?
That's it.
Okay. Thanks so much. Okay. At this time, we will head into an executive session, and those who have been invited to stay may do so, and those who are not may leave. Executive session at 6:20. I'll entertain a motion to enter into executive session regarding a personnel matter pursuant to 1 MRS A 405 6A.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? Do you have any? Thank you very much. Time in at 6:21. Turn my mic on. I will entertain a motion to deny a grievance filed by the Winthrop Education Association under the collective bargaining contract between the board and the Winthrop Education Association support staff, and to direct the chair to provide the association with the board's written decision within five days in accordance with Article 23 E3C.
So moved.
All those in favor? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting for October 15th, 2025, as written.
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor? Right. Heading into public comment. If there are any folks online or in the room who'd like to speak, we just ask that you indicate by your stand online and stand up to the podium if they'd like to speak.
Joel Stoneton, Athletic Director at the high school, and I just want to take a moment and publicly say to Abby St. Clair, congratulations on him being an MVC All-Star, All-Academic. I missed it the other night, and just wanted to make sure that we will also do it in Town Hall next time we're together, but I also wanted to take the public forum to do so.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Abby. Any other public comment? Nothing at all. Okay. At this time, we'll close our public comments section and enter into our reports, starting with our superintendent report by Dr. Foley.
All right. Good evening. I have two resignations to report. Erica Belts, who is a school nutrition worker. Lori Mellon has been appointed to replace her. And then also Allison Prescott, the librarian at the middle school, is resigning at the end to be at the end of this school year. And then I also want to report that Lori Smell is retiring effective November 30th. We will be posting for that position tomorrow, and then we'll have somebody in place by January the 1st. Administrators are working hard already on next year's budget. We will begin meeting with the administrators to review their budgets at the end of November, and that will go through until the break. My presentation to the board will be at the end of January or the beginning of February. And our priorities, we've been talking about that, as an administrative team, will focus on safety, increasing our maintenance lines, and increasing student achievement. Last year, we also had creating the baseline budget, and we've achieved that. So that's no longer a goal for this upcoming year. A reminder that you are invited to the Town Charter Commission meeting on Tuesday, November the 18th at 6 o'clock. They would like to have more of a discussion around the process of the school budget being adopted. And I want to give a big thank you to the Winthrop Education Corporation for awarding over $5,000 in grants this week to our teachers. Some of these requests are for additional books in the school, while others are funding field trips to Boston and another one to the Portland Symphony. And we are very grateful for our partnerships, not only with the Winthrop Education Corporation, but others like them in town. Town manager Anthony Wilson and I had a meet, the public meeting, last Tuesday, attended by a few community members. We had a good discussion. And then I will hold my next community forum with the public via Zoom on November 20th at 9:00 a.m. with Megan White, Director of Teaching and Learning. We will provide some updates and also take questions about all topics pertaining to education. So please zoom in and join us. We do three of these at a year, and we do them at various times. This is the morning one, then we'll do an afternoon one, and we'll also have an evening one. Our athletes had a wonderful fall season. There were three conference championships. Golf were runner-ups for the states, cross-country with Southern Maine champs and state runners-up. Our boys soccer battled for a playoff spot, and our girls soccer once again qualified for the playoffs. Cheering was back for its second year. Field hockey beat Booth Bay last Saturday and plays in the regionals tomorrow against Yarmouth. And football is still fighting for a bid to host the regional championship, and will be playing Oak Hill on Friday night right here. And then our greatest accomplishment for us this fall with athletics is a new participation record. We had 171 students out of 248 playing a fall sports, and that's 70% of our high school population, shattering the previous record of 57%. And I just have to note that our middle school cross-country player Sawyer West's son, to our board member Tim West, won every meet this year. And Lori Smell wanted me to be sure and mention that. And then our field hockey team at the middle school won their conference, which bodes well for our high school field hockey team as they feed up to that level. And then lastly, congrats to Alicia and Libby on their reelection to the board. And then we will be welcoming Jason Burnham, who won as a write-in candidate beginning in January. And that concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any questions, comments? Okay. Head into the chair report. I attended the MSBA, the Main School Board Association Delegate Assembly. We had nearly 60 voting delegates who thoughtfully considered and robustly debated, proposed new revised and deleted resolutions during the annual MSBA Delegate Assembly that was held on October 18th, Saturday. The actions taken by the delegates guide the MSBA's advocacy efforts in the years ahead. The MSBA Legislative Committee and staff will use these resolutions that we had come up with as a compass during the upcoming and future legislative sessions. We also elected the 2020 MSBA officers, and we elected the MSBA Board of Directors. And also, I wanted to congratulate Libby and Jason on their wins. Have a look forward to being in the new year. And that does conclude my chair report. So at this time, we will ask the student representative to give their report.
We had our fall sports banquet this past Monday. The remaining sports team in postseason play our football and field hockey. Our field hockey team plays tonight, tomorrow at Yarmouth in the Southern Maine Regional Championship game against Bruce Bowen. And our football team plays this Friday against Oak Hill. For the regular season, the football team allowed the least total points in the state. This past weekend, the boys' cross-country team was the state runners-up, and Alfie Cognata placed second individually. Two weeks ago, NHS had its fall induction. This is one of the largest Winthrop NHS groups ever to be inducted, with a total of 60 inductees. This Friday, NHS starts a food drive that will end the following Friday. And the Drama Club will be performing "The Legend of Sleepy Hollow" on the 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
Thank you so much, Gianni. Any questions or comments from the board?
Is that in November the play? Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Gianni. Heading into our committee report, started with, starting with finance.
We did not meet, but are meeting prior to our next school board meeting.
Thank you, Tim. And policy?
We have not met, but our next one is scheduled for November 18th.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. And negotiations? We did just have our very first meeting kind of go over our rules. And then we have meetings scheduled. I think we have five meetings scheduled out, so we'll start that up next week on the 13th. All right. We'll close our committee reports, and this week we have no administrator reports. We have no old business. This time, we'll start with our new business, 7.1. I'll entertain a motion to approve the following policies for first reading. IHC, class ranking, high school, ready for the first read to the board. JLIE, student automobile use and parking. And policy BID, board member compensation and expenses.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. I will ask Principal Dufour to come up and talk about the first two, and then I will speak to the last one. Do you want to, do you want to start with the automobile one? I think it's simpler.
I was just going to ask that. So the cleanup of the automobile policy is just a reflection of what we do. Basically, it takes out requiring students to have a parking decal or a parking pass. Something that we haven't done in a long time, simply because kids lose them. You know, they drive different cars, parents' cars. So we reflected a process of where students, you know, register their vehicle with the office through a form that if we need, you know, if something happens, an accident, which does happen in the parking lot, you know, speeding or a car needs to be moved, that we can quickly identify who that vehicle belongs to and call them down and get that taken care of. So it's just really cleaning up some language, and it's reflective of what we actually do at the high school.
Thank you very much, Principal Dufour. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Okay, so we'll go on to the top 10 and the suggestions that we're making for change.
So the top 10 or the class ranking policy, one piece was cleaning up some language that was incorrect. It was not parallel in the policy. Reflective of, you know, class ranking being locked in at the end of the seniors' first semester. So after the first 14 quarters, previously it said 12, and the practice was 14. And it mentioned later in the policy that, you know, it's locked in after the seniors' first semester. So we fixed that to 12 early in the language and made it 14. So that's when seniors' grades are locked in to determine class ranking. The other piece was a policy that, or a piece of that policy that I approached Dr. Foley about over a year ago that I would, that I wanted to change, and it was about students that potentially move into Winthrop High School being ineligible to be in the top 10, because there was a consecutive amount of quarters that they had to attend the high school in order to be in the top 10. And my feeling about that was, and I can give a couple, like a few scenarios of things I've actually witnessed or been part of in a former school district. Kids, you know, any kid who moves in, sophomore, freshman, junior, senior year, in my opinion, should be potentially eligible for the top 10. An example, three examples that I've dealt with in the past. You have a family who is military, and they move around from place to place, and they're deployed or they're stationed in Maine, and they move here. Certainly out of the, out of the student's control and shouldn't be penalized because they have excellent grades. Another one would be that I've actually dealt with is like the death of a parent or guardian. And then the students move to a different community with, let's say, their grandparents. Again, penalizing a student because of, you know, something unfortunate happening in their lives, and they have excellent grades, and they're really forced to change school districts, maybe, you know, as a junior or a senior. Another one would be like, you know, a McKinnon Vento kid or a kid who is experiencing, you know, temporary or longer-than-normal homelessness for a number of reasons, change of job, or, or parents, you know, out of the picture for whatever reason. And they, you know, have to live someplace else and move into a different community again. You know, I've seen plenty of students who persevere through that and have, you know, maintain excellent grades in social lives. Again, penalizing a student, in my opinion, to not be eligible for something. There was a caveat in there that gave students an honorary top 10. I've never done that in my three graduation ceremonies. You've never had that instance. But I felt that this was an inequity with students, and I wanted to rectify it.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions or comments?
And then the third one is just around the stipend that board members receive. And again, it's just that it hadn't been revised since 2016. And since then, the board and the town voted to up the compensation for board members, and so that's just reflecting current practice.
Any comments or questions regarding that? Seeing no questions or comments, give a vote. All those in favor? Thank you for your unanimous vote. And our next item of new business is a discussion of the turf fields fees by Joel Stoneton.
Yes, and this was a request by a couple of board members in the past year, and so I keep a little parking lot, and we finally get it.
Here we are.
And so here we are.
So when you pack it, you should have something that lays out what the current charges are for the turf field. And I just have a couple of points I'd like to share with you first. The way, the way this transpired is a private group created this, funded this, turned it over to the town, and then turned it over to the school as a gift. And part of that conversation, I guess, if you will, was that we were going to have a space be rentable to offset some of the costs in the future for the turf to be replaced. That has about a 10- to 12-year life, maybe a little bit longer, just because we usually just use it in the fall. The rentable space is much like the PAC. There's only one like it in the whole district. So if somebody wants to use it that's not a school group, the thought process is there is wear and tear from an outside group as well as it's a way of holding that place for someone to use it. The community is always open to use the field. We quite often have folks down there using it on the weekends. Just tonight, when I was leaving practice, there was a group of kids down there setting up to play soccer. That's always there, but again, we have to have some sort of structure that allows folks to have that space. The funds are directly put into an account to just replace the turf. What that means to you as a board is that money is taken in, and it's put over here and will not be used until the turf has to be replaced. If there's some form of repair that's needed, we budget for that annually. So for example, if someone were to go down there and, you know, tear up the turf, burn it, whatever, there is, you know, always some threat of vandalism. We do have money in our budget to address that. And again, that won't be something that would have to come out of that fund, so it's protected in a sense. And again, we had had that conversation repeatedly to make sure that we were telling the taxpayers that we are trying to lessen the burden, because when we get there in 10 or 12 years, the estimated cost is between $3,000 and $350,000 just for the turf. Everything else is in place. That's already been paid for, and theoretically, that won't have to be changed. The, another point, I guess, for the lack of a better term, is the local stakeholders were involved with this. So what that means is your YMCA was there, sitting at the table, is part of the committee. I represented the school. We had other affiliates from other groups within town that understood that this was what we were, we were coming forward with, because it gets kind of difficult, and it's hard for me to explain it as a football coach, because it seems I'm biased. We have no other football field to go to, so those types of things have to get scheduled differently. And that's becoming more of an issue, just because, like, for example, the middle school football team had three practices on a football field, and there's no lights, and things kind of changed quickly for them. We do, we do charge the least amount in Central Maine. I did do some research. We are, we are $55 an hour for nonprofit, especially that are Winthrop-based. Just comparably down the road, it's $85 at Lewiston, and $165 if you also use the lights. There are no other districts, like I said, that we're aware of that do not charge. Coney, Gardner, they also charge. It is more. It's not a ton more, but it is more. On a side note, that's been very sellable. Is that a word? It's very appealing to people to rent it. The MPA was here last year. They were astonished by how cheap that we were. And we hold the MVC championship every year because it's not a huge impact on the conference and the conference dues, which by our extra work saves money for us as a district, but also brings in for local businesses. Last year, Winthrop Pizza called and said, "We're out. Don't send anybody down." And that's what we wanted. We wanted to bring people in. Excuse me. And then I guess just the last piece is that part of outside groups renting this, "I'm your employee. You do pay me. I'm in charge of that. When someone wants to rent it or so forth, I have to set that up or give time to do that." So in my mind anyways, it's a way of offsetting those costs. I don't get paid from that by any means. I'm just saying it's a service that we offer for the school to make money to help down the road. So that's kind of just like how we got to this point, and I'm open to any questions that you don't feel were covered at the time that I just explained.
Thank you, Joel. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Sure.
The, you had said that the Winthrop, the private committee that was responsible for, is that still intact?
Yes, so the committee is a separate entity now that's raising funds for the track. So like everything that happens down here currently, right now, that is all school business. So I'm your representative of managing that, but also scheduling it for you and doing the upkeep. We, we're called the, we call ourselves the WAC, because it's the Winthrop Athletic Committee Complex or something like that. And we meet, we're starting back up again in December to get grants written and started the next process on phase two. Little backstory, everything that we do will be 100% to complete the phase so it stands on its own. Meaning, if someone else is standing here in five years and the track isn't done, you're still okay. There's, there's no safety risk, which was what originally triggered this problem. I don't know how many folks on the board know that, but we did receive a report from an architectural study that we had to do something, or we were going to be held liable for injury. So to answer your question, yes, and we're just fundraising. We have our own 501(c) number that's not directly correlated to the, to the school. And we don't represent the school either. It's very clear that we're raising money to do this as a gift to the school.
Okay. The reason I had asked is because that, the WAC is referenced in the policy several times. So if it was gifted to the school, is it still relevant that there, that committee is involved in decision-making on the complex?
It depends on what policy, or I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Do we have multiple policies?
No, I'm not sure that there's a policy for that, or we have agreements. So what I think you might be looking at is when it was adopted by the board as a gift, we had something in place stating how we operated within business. Part of the regulations of doing that was something like the WAC had to approve XYZ. That was before it was turned over to you. So now the WAC is directly involved through me as a liaison, if that makes sense.
I think this is an agreement that you're looking at.
Okay.
And, and recently, I think we did something with the F-PAC, and I made sure that we took out the fee part and made it more an exhibit so that we can adjust those costs as we.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes.
Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And so this is kind of similar to that.
Okay.
So to answer your question directly, though, does it make sense that they're still involved with school decisions? No.
Yeah.
And that, and as the liaison, I guess, I don't know how else to explain it. That's not what we're doing. I'm just, I work with them, and I work for you, and we try to make it work through funding.
Okay. So then is this, is this agreement still in play? Because there is a piece in here that also refers to nonprofit organizations. So it says, participants belonging to a Winthrop-based nonprofit organization, which I would assume would be like the Y or are you, the football program, won't be assessed a field use fee for games and practices. So.
I don't, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what date or, I don't know what you're looking at. I do know that that was changed when, when we decided to do the $55 charge for YMCA as well as youth groups.
I think this is still on the website, and it was updated in 2024.
Sure, and I have no problem checking into that and getting.
They just don't want us to have conflicting information out there if we're charging our nonprofits. I also, I think we should just kind of, if we're taxing, right, Winthrop.
Yes.
Families for the use of the, you know, the maintenance of the field down the road.
Right.
Then it does make sense that that particular piece be in there, because it feels like we're kind of double-charging families if our nonprofits that are supporting our kids' programs are paying for the field. So I think that's just something that, you know, we should definitely make sure is kind of cleared up.
Are you following?
Yeah, I mean, I would push back a little bit and say that anything that's going to put wear and tear on that, I think if they're not school-related, that we're upkeeping, I think that they still should have some sort of fee.
Okay.
Otherwise down the road.
That wasn't the intent.
What's that?
It looked like within this agreement, though it wasn't the intent, so.
You're completely right.
And I think this is currently public.
Yes, and I can understand, and I know that from talking with you, that's where some of the confusion for people is coming in.
Yeah.
But you're 100% correct. That was the intent originally, until we started looking at where figures were going to be down the road. And we felt that we had to have some sort of minimal charge to make sure that we were putting something away so we didn't come back to the taxpayers and say, "Hey, sorry, we didn't, we didn't want to do this, but now we need $300,000." And we are also putting money in as a school every year towards that fund to build that up. And that feels comparable, I guess, for the lack of a better term, because we're putting wear and tear on that too. So it feels like we're helping the process because we're creating the damage too. That's, that's just how my mind works, so that's, it may not add up to what you're thinking, and that's okay. That's why we're discussing it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Mentioned that this evening, you said. You had mentioned this evening, you saw some kids going down there and playing. Are they renting it or just casually, casually kids can go down and play soccer or whatever from the neighborhood or?
Yeah, so if they chose to, I doubt they did. Yeah, so if they chose to, I doubt they did. There's a schedule that's posted on our high school website that puts up, it's a Google Calendar, just says who's there so they know when those open spots are open. We're working with Tifshaw so we can get something out that's up to date as far as letting people know when the lights are off. After our MSMA visit, we also were told to put up certain signs that removes our liability if they're there on their own. So what we wanted was community there, and that's what I think is happening.
Thank you very much.
I do say that what was presented when we first discussed this field, I started pulling out to read some of it, is very different from a lot of this, you know. So I think putting out a statement to bring some transparency and understanding so people say, hey, yeah, things have changed from what it was presented, what we thought we were getting, to what it's changing to now. Also, the one thing for the fund, so you said there's a 501(c)(3) that's still kind of like helping to raise funds?
Yes.
So that goes into a separate fund account that they have established? Now, the funds that you have listed on here that we charge, are those funds going into a school?
Yes.
Line, and they're going.
They're not into a.
Through our financial.
They're just into a school account with, there was, we signed an MOU when we did the exchange of who owned what, with the intent obviously of coming here with everything that stated that that account would be simply for redoing the field.
And it's under the school and not.
100%.
Yes, that's that. I think that's all going into the reserve account that we just established.
I mean, I don't have access to charge it. Like, if I think we need something, I think it actually has to come from your, I don't know who does, but it's not me and it's not WAC.
You know, I just ask because I know sometimes 501(c)(3) is closed out and that.
Yes.
And so I just want to make sure that the school has that control of the funds versus what.
It's actually called the Public Schools Turf Fund. And I send it right down to Ida, and she deposits it, so. But and I hear both of your points, and I would be more than willing to, you know, sit with Dr. Foley and redo everything, well, not redo, but just see, put out what I am aware of that is out there for.
Yeah, I think there's some clarification in the line.
100%.
So that.
Yes.
Because I have heard some confusion by people in the community, and I don't, it's a really great, you know.
Absolutely.
Flex for us. So I don't want there to be any, you know.
Right.
Really gray areas that people don't feel.
Yeah, and you know, something we stumbled into that we didn't understand or think about was, we have something with the PAC that if you rent it so many times that on the fifth use, it's not, it's so just. Right, exactly. And so that was brought to our attention, and we didn't charge for the, I think it was for the banquet that's happening tonight. And we just said, you know what, we understand that, and we're not going to penalize you because we're not sure. So we know that we have a little bit of work to do. Little things, right? But I mean, they need to be done.
Yeah, I definitely think the confusion, but one thing that I like to see just because of the town is that being brought with the historical society so it could be registered and logged with them. I think that would be a great valid point, especially for, you know, all our students now, their children. That will be logged. But yeah, it would be nice to do something because I've received a lot of information and upsets and confusion and stuff.
Yes.
I know I had requested to put it on here, and I'm glad it is because I think it would clear up a lot.
I love that idea too, because we actually have a lot of great pictures of it being done, just like the high school. You know, that's just, when you get to be our age, you might care about that stuff. So yeah, I definitely hear all that, and I certainly can move forward with that. That's not, that's not hard at all. And I can, depending on how you want to handle it, I can send it to you, or, you know, I'll talk to Dr. Foley, and you guys can communicate with her, or whatever you guys want. It's not a problem. It's all transparent.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Joel. Appreciate it.
Yeah, awesome. And if you have any other questions, please reach out. If you have people coming to you, please have them reach out. We're, doors open, and I want open communication so people understand where we're at.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, that closes up our new business. We have our second public comment session. There are folks on Zoom or in our rooms that would like to speak. We just ask that you indicate by the right, the raised hand or the podium. No one online. Okay, we'll close our public comments section and enter into school board comments. Any comments from the school board? Okay, being done, we'll move on. All right, without objection, I'll declare the meeting adjourned at 7:40.